Let me call this meeting to order and establish that we have a quorum. Basilio Villarreal, present. Jay Peña, not present. Eduardo Eri Ramírez.
Present.
Dr. Veronica Barrera.
Present.
Noi Castillo.
Present.
Johnny Pope, the fourth.
Present.
And Eliezar Velázquez.
Present.
Before we begin, let me just thank Ariel Osuna for allowing us to have this meeting here at Grua High School. It's always a pleasure to come here. It seems that this school was built, what, eight, 10, 12 years ago and looks brand new still. So, thank you very much for having us here today. You and all your staff, thank you for having us here today. Thank you. With that said. On a different note, before we go any further, let me just say Ariel Osuna, the principal of Grua High School, is going to Greener Pastures. He's retiring, so he's gonna have a good time. He's gonna be playing golf every day. So, congratulations on your retirement. Hopefully, you have a lot of fun and visit us once in a while. Thank you. With that said, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Eri Ramírez in vocation. Mr. Eliezar Velázquez.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little prayer, Mr. Velázquez.
Everyone bow their heads. Lord, as we gather here today, we pray for you to give us guidance on every decision made here tonight. We pray for everyone here and their families and that tomorrow is guided by your word and your, and you, Lord. Thank you for everything, Lord, in your name we pray.
Amen.
Pray for him.
At this, at this time, let's go to section four, approval of the minutes. Public meeting, December 14th, 2023. Special board meeting, December 14th, 2023. Special board meeting, January 17th, 2024. Regular board meeting, January 2020, 25th, 2024. Special board meeting, February 15th, 2024. Special board meeting, March 8th, 2024. Regular board meeting, April the 3rd, 2024. And regular board meeting, April the 24th of the year, 24, 2424. Do we have a motion?
That's our move, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, sign off by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public forum, anybody? Okay. We'll continue. At this time, we're gonna have Rey Ramírez. We're gonna be recognizing some of our student athletes. Mr. Ramírez.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Peña Superintendent. Yes, tonight we're here to honor our, or to recognize our student athletes who won this district, or by district, and won their qualified or competed at the state tournament, or track meet. So, we'll start off with our Rio High School baseball team. If I can have Coach Lopez, his staff and his boys come up to the front, please. Coach Lopez, and of course, and our Raddlers made the playoffs. They finished 10-4 this year in district, title second, and they won the first round of the playoffs, so they're just by district champions. They beat Corpus Christi Rey in the first round, so we're super excited about what the future holds. We got a lot of young men that are returning next year, so we look forward to a bright future for the Raddlers.
I understand that the boy is part of the trophy coach, but you have it in the vehicle, but we can bring it a little bit and if you want to take a picture of the trophy later, it'd be nice to. Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening, good evening. Thank you, guys, and thank you, guys, for coming out here. And I just wanna, again, congratulate these gentlemen right here. They put on a tremendous season. You know, we started kind of sluggish at the beginning, but you know, we ended up, you know, pretty doing, doing pretty good. So, again, guys, good job. Congratulations. Thank you, boys. Next up, I'm gonna invite Coach Carlos. I don't think he's here, but Coach Salas, if you would bring the varsity boys' track team down, please, over to the front, please. We got half of the boys missing, but these are your 2024 district champions. Coach Carlos and his staff have done a great job. This is their fourth district title in the last eight years, so again, very proud of what they've accomplished and very successful. And again, I know most of the kids are not here present tonight, but again, just want to recognize their accomplishments and again, they're district champions. To start off, we had a very successful track season. Our boys set their goals early in the year, and nothing was gonna stop them from getting those goals, so they were able, we were able to win district. This is the second year in a row, so God willing, next year, we'll be back here again. Thank you. Also want to mention that Dr. Varela also was a state qualifier. He was not here today, but again, just wanted to recognize him. Dr. Varela competed for the shot in the discus. The discus event was the one that he really excelled at. Was a district champion, area champion, regional champion, and state qualifier. He placed seventh overall, and he will be extending his athletic career at UTRGB. So, again, congratulations to Dr. Varela. Next up, I'm gonna invite Coach Pratt and the wrestling state qualifier to come up, please, to be recognized. This year, Coach Pratt, or his team qualified for Young Ladies to the State Tournament. And as they come forward, I'll mention their names. Leah Gutierrez, a senior, is a four-time state qualifier, so congratulations to her. Liliana Canales, a senior, also state qualifier. Sierra Cabeda, a freshman, state qualifier also. Malik Lady, Maldivinos is a sophomore. He's running a little late, but he'll be here shortly. He's also state qualifier and plays fourth overall at the state tournaments. Just like at the athletic banquet, I'm gonna keep it real short. Thank you. Thank you, Coach Pratt. Next up, I'm gonna ask Coach Confian and his state qualifiers, come up, please. Our boys, our left team. Mr. Coach Confian qualified three Young Men to the State, Young Man and Lady, to the State Tournament. Pablo Solís, state qualifier. Christopher Molagas, state qualifier. And Maya Mamánez, Wonderump, and Silvio Melendez to the State Tournament. Congratulations.
First of all, first and foremost, thank you for inviting us and recognizing our athletes. We're very proud of our athletes for their ongoing commitment to the program. You get all three of these athletes together, and you have the perfect score. We're very proud of them, and we wish, hopefully, we can continue doing our best the following week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach Confian. I'm moving on to the Grua High School. This year, we had the Grua High School Olympic team, Coach Adam Romes, and our two state qualifiers, please come forward. We have Miranda Lopez, a state qualifier, plays fourth overall at the state tournament. And I'd like to bring in one, sir, but the she is our former state champion for this year. So, congratulations to her. First of all, thanks for having us. Kindly to be here today, but the she is very appreciative. They put it in the word, even though we feel that it would be nice and we appreciate the support. Thank you, guys. And we appreciate you. And last, I'll leave it to the Young Lady, Ms. Fabina Hohm, is with the girls' track and field. Of course, she is here also, please. So, Fabina, of course, is our track field champion. She competed both the shot and the discus, but again, she discussed, I think, in her preliminary. She was our district champion in both shot and discus, regional champion. In the state meet, she played strength overall in the discus and fifth place in the shot. But I'm glad people else will continue her athletic career at the next level. There are a lot of things still undecided, right? It's the UTRGB, the UTSA, or the hundred awards in Atlanta, so we wish her this a lot. Congratulations. Thank you. Well, the track athletes, congratulations. I know it takes a lot of hard work, but the power lifting, same thing. Hard work always pays off, and I know you work hard. And the wrestling, congratulations on another great season. And I call it to someone, I call my baseball team, congratulations. Those of you who come, we run it over here, it's a lot of athletes. Thank you very much. Thanks for representing the RGCG I S D school district. We appreciate all the hard work that you do, and I hope everybody here who got recognized today has worked hard. So, thank you for everything you do. With that said, we will go to the next police department, please. I'm gonna have to move our members to straighten this for today. The police department, security department, have been helping, did they pick up for this year? This week, the past, when we were working tremendously in the traffic for the graduations and promotions, the pandemic came up, it was all because of them. We were able to do what we had to do and take care of business last week.
To the police. To the police department, thank you for keeping our students safe, our staff safe, and our schools safe. With that said, Mr. Ramírez, I'm gonna go down the line. Anything about sports, or police, or things of that nature, comments?
Both?
On everybody?
Well, when it comes to athletes, I think we gotta make sure and thank the parents, the coaches. I mean, this is the pillar. This is as high as it gets when it comes to recognition. You're here because you've reached the level that most teams don't. And you're here to represent the district, and you're doing it extremely well. And I know it requires a lot, but this is what you can accomplish when you set your mind and your goals to it. And the police officers, we live in uncertain times, so you come in every day and put your lives on the line for not only the personnel, but especially the kids. And there's just so much that can happen in today's world, and it just seems like you're always ready for whatever comes our way. So, we owe you, a little thanks is nothing compared to what we owe you. So, thank you all for what you do.
Mr. Castillo.
Yes, I want to thank the coaches, the athletes, and the kids, you know, the milestones that they've accomplished. You know, this, this is just a kickstart for life, and enjoy it, have fun. You guys are doing a great job, and you're representing our district very well. Mr. Ramírez, thank you for prehearing that, and all the coaches and staff. Again, you guys are doing a great job. And in regards to the police department and the security department, thank you all for what you guys are doing every day. You know, I think that you guys are the front line for our kids and staff and everybody in this building. And you know, you know, thank you for that. You know, you guys are giving your life at a moment for somebody else in an instant. So, God bless you all, and you know, thank you for what you do, again.
Mr. Pope.
Just want to say congratulations to all the students and the athletes for all the long hours that you all put in. I mean, it's, it's, it's fun to win, but you all have to understand that you also need to have fun while you all are doing it. So, enjoy it. And as to the police officers and all the officers, thank you for all the time that you all put in, the sacrifices you all make. And for the safety of the students, I mean, it doesn't go unrecognized. We try and give you all the equipment that you all need, and we're here, we're here to lend a ear for anything you all might need or request. So, thank you all.
Mr. Velázquez.
First of all, I want to thank the kids for making us so proud. Thank you for the, for, coaches, for all that you do. Well, I can't express. I feel so proud to be in from part of this board, and I'm gonna say it, pero, I hope Rio Grande doesn't get mad. We, La Grua had a major league baseball player. No, thank you so much, coaches and kids, and for the police department. Thank you very much for keeping our kids safe. That's our number one priority. And congratulations against to, again, to, to every, every kid, every coach, and police department.
Taka Barrera.
Yes, congratulations to all the athletes. Really, one word that stands out when I see you all is discipline. For you all to be where you're at is because you had a lot of discipline, and I think discipline is gonna take you very far in life. So, whatever it is you want to do, I'm sure you're gonna, you're gonna achieve it. And for the coaches, heart, you all don't get paid, the stipend is not equivalent to what, how much time and effort you put into it. So, really, thank you so much for the coaches, for, for being out here and doing this for, for our district. And then to all the police officers and everybody out there, thank you for keeping us safe. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
With that, with that, with that said, thank you to everybody for everything you do and keeping the RGCG I S D family successful. Bring us a lot of accolades. And for you all, guys, out there in the law enforcement, thank you for keeping our family safe. With that said, we move on to reports and information. Item one, update on student and staffing highlights.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Peña, and the rest of the school board. These are the highlights that we have for the months of April and May. Just want to remind you all that we are averaging about 30 Facebook posts or shares, so it's very, very hard to choose. But of course, these are the ones that we chose for April and May.
April and May were sensational for our district. Rio Grande City Grua I S D held Decision Day at the Fort Ringgold Auditorium. Students from all three of our high schools attended this special event. Thank you to everyone who made this event a success. RGCG I S D celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week with a parade party at our east and west side location. Teachers showed their school spirit to pick up their special token of appreciation from Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., our sensational superintendent, our school board of trustees, and all of our RGCG I S D administration. School Lunch Hero Day was proclaimed on Friday, May 3rd, by our school board of trustees. We would like to thank our child nutrition staff for everything they do for our district. We also held the annual top 10% banquet at the Versailles Event Center. The ceremony recognized the top 10% of students from each high school for their exceptional academic achievements. RGCG I S D hosted the annual recognition banquet for outstanding service and performance. This event honored our campus teachers of the year and district retirees. Rio Grande City Grua I S D hosted the annual top 10 breakfast. Our top 10 students from each of our high schools arrived at this event and were treated to a Hollywood VIP experience. RGCG I S D hosted an exhilarating free throw contest, bringing together all our amazing elementary schools and their talented third, fourth, and fifth graders. Great job to every participant for their incredible sportsmanship. Our three high school graduations were a success. We would like to congratulate the class of 2024 on this tremendous achievement and wish them the very best as they continue their education. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., and our school board of trustees hosted a special meeting to honor our teachers of the year. During this event, the awardees received their checks and were congratulated for this prestigious achievement.
With that said, item two will be done in closed session, correct, Mr. Salazar? Okay. At this time, let's move to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve item one as presented in our board of package?
So, move, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Eliezar. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, sign off by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can you, can somebody give us a list of the people who donated, please? Not necessarily the amounts, just the people.
Good evening. The donors for these months are Texas Cafe, Ezekiel Trevino López, Martinez Truck Repair, McDonald's, Peter Piper Pizza, Chick-fil-A, Stark Amargo Bridge, Strauss Custom House Brokers, the Pediatric Care Center, Team Funded Gonzales Enterprises, the Haze Foundation, Dante D. Garza, Guadalupe Flores, Eliezar Garza, Lisandri Rivera, DNA Health Provider, Circle Seven Express, Cidia Blagruya, Lone Star National Bank, Joel Villarreal, Rene Ramirez, Rio Rehab, La Mexicana Drive-Thru, Triple G Livestock Auction, Five Star Clark Construction, Iglesias Manuel, Guards Insurance Agency, Milinda Familia, Arnold Daycare, Javier Lee Pérez, J and B Pharma Care, Star Molding, Border Enterprises, the Pediatric Care Center, Lone Star National Bank, and LTG Ricardo Sanchez.
Thank you. At this time, let's move to action items. Can we have a motion to approve item two, item three, item four, and item five, and item six? With item six, CFP-24-48, that we are authorizing the superintendent and the robeless to go into negotiations and bring us our best price that we can back to our board so we can approve it. With that said, can we have approved those motions? Item two, three, four, five, and six, with the caveat that we're gonna go renegotiate CFP-24-48, and they're gonna bring it back to the board with the final and best price.
I move to approve item three through number six.
Second. Second, by Noi. Any discussion?
I have a question on... The, no, it's not here. Never mind. The one of six. Oh, yeah, it's here. Okay. Why are we changing the, the person or the company we're using for irrigation and landscaping? Is that, were we already in contract with somebody, or is this a new site?
Are you talking about the safety fences?
I'm talking about safety fences and the, actually, the irrigation and landscaping. It's two different things, the fences and then the landscaping.
It's just for the safety fences.
Okay. Hold on. Yes, and they do fences.
Yes.
Rio Irrigation and Landscaping, and they have experience with that, and you looked through their...
We checked, yes. And we called references and everything, and they were good.
Okay.
They have bonding, correct?
Yes. And if we do approve them, they are willing to go out and get the performance and payment bond.
That, and when you get bonding, if for some reason we have a problem with a project, the bonding company will come and take over. So, they're bonded, and they're insured to make sure that the project is completed, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Grisanto, can you email me the references and their experience? I think you've done it before for other companies.
If it's, well...
Yeah, if it's, if it's part of the matrix that you use for evaluating them, then it's open, I mean, it's open to the public, so it surely is open to the board members.
Okay.
Yes.
The evaluation sheet, that's what you're asking for, the matrix.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Or not? All those in favor, sign off by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, can we have a motion to approve item seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 as presented in our board package?
So, move with a little discussion, Mr. President.
Okay, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Number eight, I just want to make sure I understand this right. That MOU, I guess, gives graduate students the, the right to have internship supervisors from the district. Is that, am I understanding that right, Mr. Dr. Salinas?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the boards, representatives of schools. That is correct, Mr. Ramírez. It's an MOU with the University of, well, UTRGB for internships on LPC prospects.
And we've never had that before, right?
We have, Mr. Ramírez. It's just, we want to renew this memorandum, and we do have individuals in the district who, who can help with that.
Well, the internships are, there's no cost to the district in any form or fashion.
No, sir. It's a residency program.
It's just for them to do internships in our district, correct?
Yes, sir.
I know they're always, they're always looking for some, so it's a good...
Correct. And the first thing we look at is obviously that our, that our staff is ready and available to do so if, if permitted.
Correct. Okay. And the same thing on item nine, it's only that our students can, no, that they can come teach here?
Correct. On item nine, this is an MOU with Texas A&amp;M University on a residency program. It's a pipeline residency program for bilingual ESL, and that's exactly the same, same model. We, we would allow that in our district for future teachers looking at bilingual ESL certification.
Awesome.
Question on number 10. On number 10, I did see that it was 10,600, and then it goes to the second year, 8,500?
That's correct, Mr. Pope. The reason that happens is the first year, this would be our first initial year, would be $2,000 of training, and then the second year, obviously, that's removed, then we pay for the software.
And then I would imagine there is funding for this.
We're paying from, from our department, from human resources. We're paying from, from our department, from Human Resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more discussion? Or not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve item twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen as presented in our board packet with discussion?
So move with a little bit of discussion on sixteen, please.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Elizar. I have a couple of, uh, questions, specifically on number, item twelve. Uh, Agile Mind Math Curriculum is costing us a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. First and foremost, uh, where are we getting funding for this, and do we have funding for this?
Uh, we're getting funding, good evening. We're getting funding for this through SCE one eighty-nine, and this program is, uh, services all our, uh, middle schools all the way to high school.
But, uh, where do we get funding from?
SCE one eighty-nine? SCE, I'm sorry, SCE one eighty-nine.
Okay, and we have funds for it, correct?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
I have a question on item thirteen. For some reason, my first year as a board member, this stuck with me, the DMAC, and, uh, there was the other option that nobody liked, or was DMAC the one that nobody, Tango, yeah?
Tango.
I don't know what, I don't remember, my Tango nobody liked.
Yeah, Tango was what we used to have.
And, and DMAC, I think, was something like eighty percent cheaper than, than Tango, correct?
That's correct, sir. And that is what we use for, um, that's our, that's what we use for all our data as well, so it's not just collects our data, we do all our evaluations, T tests, um, LPAC, after-school tutoring, everything goes through there.
And I would imagine administration is still on board with DMAC.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
How things change, I don't, I don't know.
No.
But, uh, I got, thank you.
I think everybody liked DMAC.
That's correct, sir. Easy, friendly, it's, it's very easy, it's friendly, there's no...
Nobody liked the other one, correct?
That's correct, sir.
On item sixteen, can I just get a breakdown? I know it's a little, two sheets was probably not enough.
On item sixteen?
Yeah, that's the E-three grant, the stipends. Just a little discussion on that.
Uh, good evening, Board President, members of the board. Uh, the E-three grant, this is our last year of the, of the grant. It will not be renewed. Uh, it was supposed to be a five-year grant, but their funding fell through. So these stipends are coming from the last part of the grant, and there is a criteria on the following pages after the board item explaining, uh, the criteria that the director, the lead teachers, the collaborative teachers, as well as the campus administrators will have to fulfill to be able to claim those grants.
So we've already been, uh, granted?
Yes, this is being paid a hundred percent from this grant. It's our last year, it was supposed to be five, but we only got three years on this particular grant. Uh, but it was a little bit over a million dollars, so this is the last part of the E-three grant.
Total or per, or per year?
Uh, no, it was about one million, a little bit over one million for the course of two and a half years.
Got it.
So they're getting stipends?
They're getting stipends, they're being paid directly from those funds.
Okay, and now, what are the amounts of the stipends?
The amounts of the stipends, they vary depending on the different things that they meet. There's different things that they have to meet. The director, for example, is up to five thousand dollars, dependent on those items that are listed before as criteria. The next one is lead teachers, up to six thousand dollars, provided they meet the criteria that's outlined there. Then the next one is campus administrators can receive up to fifteen hundred dollars depending on whether they meet the seventy, thirty of the criteria. And then the collaborative teachers, these are campus teachers that were providing support, same thing, there is a criteria outlined there, and it's up to five thousand dollars for the collaborative teachers.
It's not costing the district a penny, correct? Everything's coming out of the grant.
Yeah, zero cost to the district.
That's what I wanted to get through. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Of course.
I have another question on the, uh, item fourteen. It's a Consider Take Possible Action on Renewal of School Amplify ELR six through eight. It's costing us sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, again, where are we getting the funding, and do we have funding for that particular pro, uh, program?
Good evening, again, we are getting the funding through SCE one eighty-nine, we do have that secured.
What does S-E-E, SEC or SE, what is it?
State Compensatory Education.
S-E-E.
S-C-E. S as in Sam, C.
Okay, compensatory education. And we do have funding, correct?
That is correct, sir, we've been budgeted for that.
Okay. So, any more questions? If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. This time, let's go to, uh, can we approve item eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three as presented in our board packet with some questions?
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
My second.
Second with by Mr. Pope. Uh, again, on item eighteen, it says renewal of ICE Station is costing us forty thousand dollars. Who could answer? Where are we getting the funds, or do we, do we have money for that particular item?
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. Uh, this is coming from SCE one eighty-nine. So ICE Station is utilized as a state-approved universal screener. We are required to screen our seventh grade students, and we also use it for online intervention and teacher support for sixth through eighth grade.
And you're getting funding from?
SCE one eighty-nine.
Okay. That S-E-E is a popular funding source, I guess, right? Okay. Let me ask a couple of other questions. It says on item nineteen, pending availability of funds. And item twenty, pending availability of funds. Uh, where are we waiting for the funds, or are we gonna get funds, or? If somebody could please tell me on that one?
Yeah, if I could piggyback on that one, that's, the funding source is listed there, but it says pending funding availability.
I don't know if you recall, we did get awarded our, um, TIA. Uh, part of the TIA, uh, requires that the district retain ten percent or up to ten percent to be able to support the program. So all of the nineteen, item nineteen and item twenty are coming from the ten percent we're keeping from the money that has been allotted to the district. So, uh, Ms. Benitez and her committee has worked very hard. We were able to designate fifty-six teachers who generated a little bit less than a million dollars in funds. From those funds, we're able to keep ten percent to continue to support the program and be able to be successful in the years to come.
For the, for the, for the item that says expenses twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, that one's old, or it's already been paid?
Uh, the one that is for twenty-three, twenty-four, that is the money that we're getting this year, that is what we owe, and we have a settle-up with TA. They don't give us the money upfront. Once we settle up, then they return that money back to the district.
Got it, okay.
Those are where the teachers are getting all kinds of monies for the teacher incentive allotment, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any more questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve item twenty-four and twenty-five presented in our board packet?
I move to approve item twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay.
I guess the funding for twenty-five is the same?
Okay, maybe, uh, this is a very interesting thing. Uh, we have an item twenty-four, Consider Take, uh, Memorandum on Understanding Between South Texas and Rio Grande City Career and Technology Department. I think it's two STEM camps that are being provided free of charge, correct?
Good afternoon, Starchonians. Uh, this is our second year that we're very blessed to have, uh, uh, someone that's very generous that's going to be paying for all these STEM camps. It's, uh, called the Science Mill, and the collaboration, the way it is, if you read the MOU, uh, it's, uh, Dr. Rick Solis, which is the president of SDC, and it's gonna be Mr. Peña, and of course, the Science Mill. And, uh, the first week, it's gonna be for elementary students. The teachers have to be CT teachers, it's gonna be, um, two engineers. And we don't pay them, the school district does not pay them, it's, they pay them, the Science Mill. All the supplies are paid for, the fee is usually a thousand five hundred per student. Um, this person that's, uh, very generous to us is going to pay for the student. So one week will be for elementary students, it's gonna be called May Day, May Day. The other week is gonna be for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and it's gonna be called Island Innovators. If you look at the attachment, uh, those of you that have the packet, um, you're gonna see the cost, it, what it's worth, about twenty, twenty thousand dollars. So this is our second year that we get this grant.
Maybe we could send the gentleman or the organization that's giving this free of charge, maybe some kind of letter of thanks, Mr. Peña, because I think this is the second year they do it, and I don't know who's doing it, but it is nice.
They don't, it's anonymous.
I was gonna ask, are they choosing just anonymous?
You asked that question.
I did ask last time. You refused to tell me.
Well, it, it is nice for people...
We don't know who it is.
Yeah, I know.
It's, it's someone.
It's nice for people to donate money for kids to get summer camps and things of that nature. And I, it's, uh, well, it's, it's tough that we can't know who it is, but, hey, anyway, whoever it is, thank you very much. With that said...
And the only thing we're asking is for free food for the students, for Kavatour.
With that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, Consider Take Possible Action on Right-Away Imaging Medical Screening. Uh, before, motion?
Mr. President, I think, Mr. Pope had a question on twenty-five. He had a question on twenty-five?
Funding for twenty-five?
It was availability of funds?
Okay. Well, let's go back to item twenty-five. Permission, uh, Consider Take About Permission to Purchase Foot Two Brilliance Program, twenty twenty-four year, pending availability of funds. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, uh, more members, superintendent. Uh, this is gonna be paid through Title III. Title III, we get a preliminary amount, but we don't get the official amount until September the first. That's why it says pending availability of funds.
So, but we're not gonna buy it till we get the funds, right?
That is correct, sir.
So, as, as long as we don't order before and then say we slow it, uh, as long as making sure that we get it and then we pay for it, not, in other words, we get the money, then we pay for it, not, not the other way around?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I have a question for this one. We were supposed to have in this meeting the Brilliance and then the Renewal for Summit. Was it with this, in this meeting? Mr. Peña, that I had asked you, we would have it in the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the other one here? I only see one.
Not in this, not at this meeting, no, ma'am.
Not in this meeting? Is that something we need?
Well, Summit is the program that we've been utilizing for language, for listening and speaking, so...
At, at this time, that's not part of the agenda right now, so, uh, we'd rather not discuss it, Mr. Valdezar. It's not, it's, uh, they're talking about Summit paid through four, and it's not part of the agenda, and...
It's, the thing is, I had asked him if we would have it, and he had told me we would, so I'm questioning why it's not here.
Just a follow-up question, you know, when you expect it to come, I mean, that's not, that's fine. Because, because it was represented that both of them were gonna be on the agenda.
Mm-hmm, through a message, I just saw my, I checked right now, just to make sure.
I think, uh, well, I don't, I, I'd rather, I'd rather leave that part for executive session, and we could, we'll discuss in executive session.
I mean, there's, there's nothing executive about it.
There is.
Why was it on the agenda?
Well, there is, there is something, and we'll discuss it there.
Okay.
Okay, we'll discuss it.
At this time, let's go, uh, item twenty-six, Consider Take Possible Action on Right-Away Imaging Medical Screening. Uh, before we go, uh, first of all, motion? We have a motion? Second. Okay, the only thing I'm gonna ask is simply put, uh, on this particular, is there any other companies that do this type of work? Uh, because obviously, that, that company is gonna make money, and I know it's free of charge to the, to the district, but...
Yes, sir, um, I believe, uh, two other companies tried to contact us, and they said that they didn't want, wanna come in to somebody that's already been doing it at our district. So, um, that, that's the best way I could say it. So, the person that we contacted, that, they said that they didn't want to take somebody else's, uh, how do I say this, uh, previous, previous, uh, helping that they've helped out our district.
I didn't, can you go through it again?
Yes, of course, so what we offer is, uh, medical screenings for our staff and their families if they're interested. So I know in the past, they've been coming, and they have found some of our staff members that have cancer, and some of our staff members had have, uh, carotid veins, um, blocked, and they had to stop the screenings, and they had to get surgery, of course. So all these screenings are preventative, and in the past, we have helped life-changing early detection to some of our staff members. So it just takes about one, two people that week help to continue to offer these services, sir.
Is it free of charge, sir?
It is not free of charge, sir. It, uh, so these, these screenings are not typically done until symptoms arise from your doctor. Uh, the point of these screenings is to, to, to early detect. I know that you hear of, uh, uh, people going to their doctors, getting their physicals, they're getting their blood work, everything seems to be going okay. Uh, there have been cases where even though they go to the doctor, they end up finding out that they have some medical conditions that, uh, for example, cancer, you know, and they're, they're stage two, stage three, yet they go to their doctor regularly. This is to try to identify any, any, how do I say this, abnormal, abnormal, abnormalities in your body that are not routinely found from your healthcare provider, sir.
And that most of the time, most of our, uh, teachers and staff will not really take care of any symptom? Like, I think that's something very important that we need investment to doing.
And yes, uh, once again, uh, some of the people that we've helped out in the past, um, don't routinely go to their healthcare provider, and they were interested in this, and they were able to, once again, uh, early detect some life prevention, uh, you know...
So what is the cost, sir?
Uh, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, sir.
Okay, so the next question I have, and I'll, I'll end it with this. Is there other companies that do it, or only this company does?
There are other companies that do it, sir, but they did not want to come in at this time due to somebody else was already there.
So this is the only company that wanted to come?
At the moment, yes, sir, that's the only one that we can do, and we'll look into future, future other, other, how do I say it, other companies, but, um, we might have the same answers that we got from...
But it's reasonable enough to where, at least last year, or, yeah, June twenty twenty-two, we had two hundred and fifteen, no, like, two thousand one hundred and twenty-six screenings done, and fifteen point six percent of those came back abnormal.
Yes, sir, of course.
So, I mean...
And if you could see in that paper, I think, uh, one of them was a carotid arteries, it said from moderate to severe, you know? So we're trying to prevent people that get stroke or any, any abnormal, any growth in the body.
The benefit's there. Thanks.
And Mr. Barreda, are these screenings available to the whole community, or just, uh...
So they were offered to our staff and their close friends and family. So, um, if you know somebody in the community, um, like, if a staff member would have told the, their friend, their, their, their neighbor that they were interested in, you know? So they were offered mainly to the staff, but...
The district is paying for the staff?
The district is not paying for the staff. Unfortunately, no, no.
And I, I think we would fall under the fifteen point six percent abnormal? Is it, is it same price for...
Yes, sir.
So this is just to let them come and do it, pretty much using our facilities and our staff?
Yes, ma'am.
It'd be nice if we could pay for it.
At the, at the end, all I care about, ma'am, sir, is I think it's really important to be able, prevention is worth a million dollars, there's no doubt about it. Just as long as, this is the only company, no other company wanted to bid on it. I just, I don't wanna get to the point that that company bid, and they didn't give us an opportunity. As long as it's the only company, and I have no problem.
This is the only company that was willing to do it, yes, sir.
With that said, all those in favor signify by, we had a motion, right? In a second, do we have a, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Before we close, the moment...
Yes, let me, let me correct myself. Doctor, uh, there was an item that Mr. Barreda, Mr. Barreda was talking about, that does go into executive session, the second part, because it does involve some items that are legal. But I'd seen it on the draft, it was taken off, so I apologize to the board, that was my mistake. But it's not on there, but we do need to discuss in executive.
Thank you.
I stand corrected, Mr. Barreda.
Thank you. At this time, under the authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.084, and I go into the closed session. The time is?
7:17.
I think we're ready. At this time, we are reconvening in open session. Section 10. In item A, I believe there's no action, correct?
Correct.
On item B, the discussion on resignation of existing personnel, motion?
I move to approve item B as discussed in executive session.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those signify.
With the exception that there was an abstention by Mr. Castillo.
That is correct.
On the resignation.
Okay, there. Let the record reflect that there's an abstention by Mr. Castillo on a particular item. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, discussion recommendations for employment of vacant positions, separate document, motion?
I move to approve item C as discussed in executive session. There were some abstentions and some votes against.
Second.
I will go against the ones I said.
Okay, there is an abstention and there is a vote against.
Right, there's two abstentions, one by Mr. Eddie Ramirez on two individuals. And then also Dr.
Two against.
And Mr. Castillo also abstention.
So, all those in favor at rest, say motion aye. And two abstentions, okay?
So, the motion carries three to nothing.
Okay, three to nothing. At this time, let's go to action, item D, no action on item D. Item E, discussion on possible student expulsions, motion?
I move to approve item E as discussed in executive session.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. There's no action on item F. Item G, board counsel update real estate and pending litigation motion?
I move to approve item G as discussed in executive session, which includes giving legal or superintendent authorization to begin or to put up a sign for purposes of vendors, right? With the gravel?
That's one, and the other one is for the agreement on the union water.
And the union water supply.
Yeah, that would be giving the superintendent authority to sign off on the contract.
We discussed that not signing off, but posting and then seeing.
Right, posting on the Right, posting on the sale of the soil.
Yes.
That would be the posting first, but then I will write up a contract with whoever gets it, and then the superintendent will have the authority to sign on behalf of the school district.
Motion? Is that enough or do I need a re...
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Motion.
So move.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, same motion, same sign. Mr. Peña, would you like to just announce the principals and maybe a police chief?
Yes, sir, I will. So, for La Union Elementary School, we have Principal Joanna Barrera. For Principal of Ringel Elementary and AC2E Elementary, Mario Sines. For Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary, Pedro Omar Peña. For Ringel Middle School, we have Principal Melinda Gonzalez. Principal of Early College, or Preparatory for Early College, is Marisa Peña. Principal for Gruya High School is Javier Garza. And for the Chief of Police, it's Ujo Hugo Garcia.
Hey, that's it? Motion for adjournment?
So move.